Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, July 20th Board of Selectmen meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Steph, do you mind leading us in the pledge?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so first item on the agenda is citizens input. Do we have anyone here for citizens input?
Well, eventually.
No, just listen to the media.
Okay, all right, great. All right, great. Anyone on Zoom or anything that came in? Nothing by email? Okay, great. So we're going to start out. We have the J.C.'s event application. I know you're here, Amy, but is anyone else joining you from?
I'm here for both.
Okay.
My question is going to Zoom in or whether he's coming.
I just, I see someone walking in through the corner of my eye. Maybe it's.
Mike said he was coming.
Let's just see who that is walking in.
It's mine.
It's mine. Okay, great. You can come on up. Right on up to the table, chief.
I lose everything in this, sir.
It's like me walking into that ceremony earlier.
Right on time.
All right, great. So if you could just start by introducing yourself and just let us know what you're here for. I think we've seen this before, but for the people at home.
My name's Amy Labrash. I am, I live at 159 Mechanic Street, and I'm the Vice President of Membership for the J.C.'s.
Chief Grace, Foxborough Police.
Okay, great.
I live right around the corner, Lewis Road.
All right, great. So you have two events. Do you mind if we just take them individually? So first, we'll take the Vendor Fair and then, and we'll take a vote on that. And then we'll take the National Night Out, okay?
Okay, so the Vendor Fair is what we've held usually twice a year, the fall and the spring. Obviously, we haven't had it per usual because of COVID, but we're looking to hopefully start back up and save the date for that particular date, which is, I believe, October 9th with a rain date of the 10th. It's a Saturday, and if it rains, it would be that Sunday.
Okay, great. And do we want to approve the rain date, Bill? Probably a good idea to put in the motion?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
The July that we've had.
Right, I know. So I think everyone's excited, though, to see some of these events, you know, that have been annual to come back. So for those of you maybe that haven't seen this event since COVID or anyone else, any questions for Amy on the Vendor Fair?
Nope.
Okay, great.
Rain date was the 10th?
Yes.
Okay. All right, ready?
Yep, we're ready for.
Motion to approve the public event application for the J.C.'s Vendor Fair on October 9th, 2021 with a rain date of October 10th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Awesome.
All right, great. One down, one to go. All right, so if you can tell us a little bit about this, the second event, and then we'll do the same.
You can start. I'll, I'll chime in.
You sure?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so on August 3rd, the, like, National Night is historically been, and Selectmen O'Leary will know, been going on for many, many years. We couldn't have it last year. And I think we've kind of reworded the pamphlet a little bit. It's, it's a, almost like a thank you, but we want to kind of make it a get-to-know. Your public safety officials, we're also including the Fire Department in this. And it's just kind of our way of being part of the community and, which we do every day. But to be able to have a group like the J.C.'s, I mean, I don't, I'm probably going to run out of words, but the amount of emails and time that Amy has put in and Linda is sending, I don't think I could be any more grateful, being the police chief, to have such an organization that supports the Police Department, the Fire Department, and just so many other groups. So Sergeant Collins is kind of my community liaison, and she's all in. And she's got, with Amy, we've got reaching out to all different groups. There'll be demonstrations from the Police Department and the Fire Department as well on scene, some activities for the kids. I don't know if I've been drafted yet to cook the hot dogs, but we're on the fence on that one. Stop and Shop is willing to donate some of the food. And, and we're with all violations, Board of Health, nothing.
We put in for that as well.
Okay, yes, Linda was all over. She was very clear on that. Do not make a mistake. So it's, you know, it's a Tuesday night, and if people around town want to send the kids up, we've got some little jumpy's for the kids to come in.
We have a DJ.
Yeah, we got a DJ. The craft group has reached out and gonna, Pat Patriot's gonna be there for the kids if they want to take pictures and things like that. So just a nice community night out. Maybe you guys in lieu of Selectmen's meeting can wave it and just come over.
We actually are. We are not having a meeting that night. I don't want to jump the gun. We're going to announce it later, but we're not going to have a meeting that night since we are going to have three in August, so it'll free all of us up.
And we've also sort of geared our tables to more community organizations and town organizations because there's a lot of things that have come to light during COVID that, resources and things like that in our community that people just didn't know about. So we have the library coming. We have Human Services coming. We have some new people coming to bring some information. GATRA will be there. A lot of different stuff, so we're really excited.
It should be great.
Yeah, it sounds like a great night.
Yeah, it's, it's special. We're, we're so lucky in this town. I, it's, you know, to have this partnership across the board. It's, it's, I'll just call it so cool. That's all. I'll just leave it at that.
So is this a new event?
No.
No, we just kind of put it on steroids. We just put it on steroids this year.
Oh, my God, well.
We've got to make up for a year of not having it, so.
I know. I don't know why I didn't know about this, but I love it. I absolutely love it. I think it's wonderful.
So we do need a volunteer for the bite suit for the canine. So Stephanie, I appreciate you signing up.
On a nice, hot August night.
Yes, we're perfect. It shouldn't hurt too much.
National Night goes, Night goes out way back to Chief.
It's 30, isn't it the 38th year this year?
When did that go back?
It is, it is.
Only 30 years.
I was going to say, yeah.
Oh, my God, I feel awful that I didn't know about this.
We started doing it right after that, probably the second or third year that it was created.
So I, I just have to inject it. I just had a conversation with Nancy Bog from the Fire Department, and she is retiring. And she actually had a conversation to say one of her first things, and you ask her to do, is plan one of these events. And she loved helping plan it way, way back in the old Forty Cell Street. I was talking about it just before I came up here, so.
So I think everyone's excited to see all these events come back, and I'm sure it will be great success.
And Thursday night, I mean, the J.C.'s minus the thunderstorms, they're, they're killing it. It's been awesome.
Do you guys have a rain date for this one?
No rain. We're all set. We got it planned.
All right, good.
It's going to happen.
Dialed in good weather.
Yep.
What are the odds it's going to rain again on a Thursday?
I have to think August is going to have no rain because we have it all out of our system. That's what I keep thinking.
I anticipate, and if we have that issue, we'll come back.
Okay.
And we'll talk about it then.
Yeah.
Any other questions? No? Okay, I think we're ready for a motion.
Motion to approve the public event application for the J.C.'s Foxborough Police National Night Out on August 3rd, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Awesome.
All right, thank you very much for all your hard work, guys.
All right.
All right, and we are just about on schedule. Do we have Tim Richmond on Zoom? Yep. Okay, great. And I think Marlene's here for a later discussion. She's here for the housing one, okay? Yeah. Okay, great. All right, Tim, can you hear us okay?
Yes, folks, thanks so much.
All right, great. Can you guys hear him okay?
Yes. Think so.
Okay, Tim, we can hear you. So if you just heard Amy's presentation, just something like that, brief, let us know what you're doing, and then we'll let you know if we have any questions.
Sure, wonderful. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here in front of the Selectmen. So my name's Tim Richmond. I'm the Event Director for Max Performance and the Sharon Triathlon slated this year for August 15th. The Sharon Triathlon has a very long and rich history in the town of Sharon. We've been directing it for the past 12 years with direct coordination with the Sharon Recreation Department, who is the direct benefactor of the event. And so we're here today to request some road access for just the cycling portion, which historically has traveled through the town of Easton Mansfield and then just a small portion in Foxborough. And we always have a police detail at one of the key intersections on Willow, I believe it's Willow and East Street. And, yeah, so we're excited to get back to racing, obviously, after a year off, just like everyone said. We're excited to work with everyone in the town. And if I, if I may, I just wanted to invite folks to come and visit the website. It's maxperformanceonline.com, and you can learn more about the Sharon Triathlon. We are always interested in working with different community organizations. We work with the Sharon Rotary Club for volunteers, several high school teams, and we are potentially seeking one more group of, you know, maybe a dozen individuals that are looking to come out and volunteer at the event, along the courses perhaps. And we're happy to generate a donation back to the group as well. So if you're interested, feel free to reach out to us. And thank you again. Let me know if there's any questions that anyone has.
All right, great, thanks, Tim. So this is a little bit different than the route we usually see. Most we see up into Ponset, you know, for 5Ks. This is kind of over on that East Foxborough side. It's on a Sunday. Any other?
We've done it before.
Yeah, we've done it before.
Just one question. How many participants do you anticipate, sir, for this event?
Yeah, so in the past, we've seen over, you know, 550, but there is still a bit of reluctance. We've done two other events in June and July this year. And so we're really anticipating, we'll be happy if we can get close to 400. So again, it's going to be a bit of a smaller return to racing, but we're still excited to do it. And then I'll call you chief again because I know that we worked together many years ago when, when you were, I believe, chief, correct? Chief O'Leary?
Yes.
We, the event itself, just so everyone knows, to the cyclist, travel in a, in a single file with the flow of traffic direction, where it's not like the Pan Mass Challenge where all, like, 400 athletes would be coming through cycling. It's spread out in waves, so it really, there's a nice symbiosis as long as we have all those police details in place.
All right, great. Any other questions? Yeah?
I would maybe ask the members of the Board. I think this just came in today, right?
So, yeah, so this did just come in today, and because we're canceling our August 3rd meeting, normally, we would have, we did kind of put this one on the agenda late by our own doing because we're not having the August 3rd meeting. So I don't think that we've heard back from anyone, that any departments had any kind of issue, right, Christina? So I think the application may just be pending those final approvals.
It was, it was updated with all the approvals, and there's no comments. And I believe the police will work with the directors as they have done in the past.
Okay, great.
So with that said, if whoever's gone through this or read through this is comfortable with it, I mean, I haven't read it, to be honest. So I'm putting my trust in the rest of the Board members that it's.
Yeah, there's an application, and then there's a map, and they detailed about the detail on Willow and East Street. So it, it looks good to me.
And in terms of.
Oh, and all the signatures are actually there, yep.
Okay, in terms of safety, everything's covered, insurance, where everything's covered off on everything, right?
Yep, we have the name of the company. We've got everything here. So it did come in late, but not through the fault of the applicant. It's so that we don't have to, we don't have to have three, three August meetings, so. I appreciate you being able to join on short notice, Tim.
Oh, no, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
All right, great. Any other questions? I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay. Motion to approve the public event application for Max Performance and Sharon Triathlon for August 15th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Thanks a lot, Tim.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
All right, so we are right on schedule. Do we have, there he is. There's Mark. All right, so we're just chugging along. Next is the Brigham and Women's Mental Health Grant, and we have Human Services Director Mark Craig on.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Can you hear us okay?
I can hear you.
And we can see your screen.
So, yes, as Lee just said, what's that?
Oh, was he cutting out a little bit?
A little bit.
A little. I'll talk slow, which is usually really hard for me. So for those who don't know me, my name is Mark Craig. I'm the Director of Human Services for the town of Foxborough, and I'm going to talk about the Brigham and Women's Health Equity Grant that we have actually just been notified that we have received. So way back in December of 2019, Brigham and Women's, because they were installing a new MRI and CT imaging machine, they did a determination of needs assessment to try and figure out when any new machine comes in, the hospital spend money in the community, which is one of those great resources that the town of Foxborough gets because we have these incredible resources in our backyard. So back in January 2020, Brigham and Women's formulated a small ad hoc subcommittee comprised of Foxborough leaders. One of those members was actually Pam McGuire from the Council on Aging and Human Services. So she was part of the early discussions. And then in February 2020, three community meetings were held throughout the community. One was in the McGinty Room, one was down at the Senior Center, and one was actually up at Town Hall. And a lot of members of the community came out. People like Paul Duma and Bob Murphy really advocated very strongly for increased access to transportation, handicap accessible transportation, which at the time, we did not have for the town of Foxborough. And then obviously, March 2020, COVID happened. So we went from a really, really fast turnaround to a much slower turnaround. And then last March, March 2021, the group Brigham and Women's reorganized, and they put out a request for letters from people of interest for the grant. So that is sort of where we stepped in. And then it was a very, very quick turnaround. So April 7th, the letter of interest was due. So I submitted two letters, one for $205,000 for the modernization and expansion of the Foxborough Van Go transportation system. So over the last year, you all know that we were able to get a handicap accessible van through the CARES Act, but still interesting in updating our Ford Taurus to a handicap accessible vehicle. I requested that, a whole host of changes for our transportation system. And then an additional $137,000 for improving Foxborough's mental health in a post-pandemic society. So those are the very fancy names for these grants. And then through a series of steps that led us through the spring, we were successful in moving to the next stage of the grant process. And for the transportation grant, we figured out that we were actually able to receive the entire funds. And for mental health, back in June, Brigham and Women's suggested that we work with the Foxborough School Department to put our, put our bids together to come up with one comprehensive bid. So in the process, talking with Dr. Burdos, talking with other members of the public schools, we came up with one, one grant bid for mental health services. So like I said, back in June, we figured out that we were being awarded these funds, and the funds for the transportation is $205,000, which 80,000 of that will go to the purchase of a new vehicle. 84,000 over three years will be able to fund a part-time transportation coordinator. Right now, we have one of our social workers doing part-time transportation, which in a slow time could potentially work. This was set up before I got here, but in a time when COVID's happening, when both social workers are straight out dealing with human services cases, it's not really a feasible option. And then we put into the grant for over a two-year period, trying out something that some people in Foxborough have talked about for years, but never really able to get, get running, is kind of a fixed route pilot program. So what does that look like? I don't know yet. Obviously, we're kind of waiting to see if the commuter rail gets back up and running, but it's something we can try out in the community. And if it doesn't work two years from now, that's okay. I mean, these are funds to kind of try out new and interesting things with our transportation. And then also $5,000 for technology and $2,000 to make our, our new vehicle look like our current Van Go that has the Van Go painting, Starry, Starry Night on the side to a little bit of branding, and then as well, some publicity money. And then the other side of this is that mental health piece. So some people are familiar with this, but Interface is a networking, a remote networking group that those in need, who actually need access to resources, Interface is just this perfect connection where if anyone in the community lacks access to resources, they're able to contact Interface through either referrals from, from the Human Services, from the School Department, from the Police Department. Any organization in the community can, can use Interface. And the best part of Interface is, is there are mental health counselors who follow up with people. So if someone is having a rough time in their life, they're checking in, making sure that they're getting access to needs, but then they'll continuously follow up with them throughout the year to make sure people are okay. And that's just not the typical resource that you see. Our social worker Pam and Christina are incredible, but their caseload, it's not something that they can continuously keep up with all of the, all the resources in the community and checking with every single person. And also, this grant will fund, fully fund our Domestic Violence Support Group, which has been having at the Senior Center for a number of years, but will fund it for a further three years and then an additional $1,000 for publicity. So all told, Brigham and Women's is going to fund a little over $280,000 over the next three years in much-needed transportation and mental health services for the residents of Foxborough. So we're, we're obviously very excited about that opportunity. Sorry, I talked really fast now.
Oh, great. Is the 80,000, is that the purchase of the new vehicle that we already have, or is that another?
No, that, that will actually be able to be another new vehicle. So right now, we have our brand-new 14-passenger handicap accessible vehicle as well as an older Ford Taurus that is, a lot of people struggle to get into. So I don't envision a 14-passenger van replacing the Taurus. I envision something smaller, like a minivan style, that instead of being a handicap accessible lift, it will just be a ramp into the vehicle.
Okay, so this is to replace a vehicle we already have?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, yeah, because the question I most often get is, you know, the grants are good, and it's not just council and aging, but what happens after the grant runs out? You know, is this a position that we're going to continue funding? Is there additional insurance? Is there additional costs, these things? So that comes up every time.
Yeah, so my, my general philosophy, certainly when it comes to vehicles for council and aging and human services, these ancillary departments, if they could not be coming from the general fund, if the money could be coming from grant services, that's, that's my own personal, personal philosophy. So I'm actually really happy to see, rather than have to go to capital and ask for money for a new vehicle, I'll be able to get this from a, from a grant service.
All right, great, wonderful. Any, I think I'm getting some little feedback. Any questions?
Sounds great.
Was it contemplated?
Hi, guys.
Oh, I don't think Katie's on mute.
Hi, Katie.
So I was just going to ask, was this contemplated in the plan or was this something because the grant was available? So I know that, Mark, what we said was, we have two vehicles. We will have two vehicles going forward because this is a replacement of one. We will have adding, this is a headcount add, which in three years, it's an add to the budget. I mean, let's just put that out there, right? And that's what, basically what Leah was.
Part-time, though, I saw, I think I said.
The vehicle, I'm not sure if that's an add to the budget. I mean, we'll have two vehicles. We have two vehicles now. We'll have two vehicles three years from now when the grant is done.
From a headcount perspective, Mark, right?
What's that?
Staff, we're talking.
It's the part-time coordinator.
Part-time transportation coordinator. Essentially, I mean, that's something that I think that we have to figure out from three years from now, if that's an essential function of our department or if that can be rolled into, kind of like it is now with the social worker doing transportation. I mean, that's something that I think three years from now, we can, we can kind of figure that out.
Right.
But that is a part-time position, too.
So this is an add to current service levels, in effect?
Correct.
All right, just wanted to make that very clear and explicit.
Yeah, pretty much, I was thinking, you know, piggybacking on what Leah and Seth said. I just want to make sure that three years from now, there's a plan, just in case, you know, I mean, no one expected COVID to come, and it did. So if there's something else or we're, you know, I mean, $80,000 doesn't sound like a lot of money, but you, you, somewhere in the, you'll be planning something. So what, what happens if you come to us in three years? Your budget comes forward and, and you're not granted the 80,000 that you're going to use.
Yeah, so it's.
So will there be a backup plan?
80,000 pays for transportation coordinator for three years.
Oh, I mean, I'm sorry, not the 80,000.
You're looking somewhere around 20,000, so.
Yeah. So right now, where did the sedan come from? Was that?
That's purchased back in 2014 using capital funds.
Okay, okay. So that was a brand-new vehicle. I didn't know if that was a hand-me-down, you know, sometimes we reutilize, okay. All right, and do you know what the purchase, what the, what the cost of that was?
I do not.
Roughly, so, yeah, so we're, so we're also talking when these, these vehicles are being replaced, with, you know, and I am speaking for a household that has two disabled people. So I'm, so let me make that pretty clear. I'm not, I'm, I see the need. I'm just wondering what we'll do three, you know, like Leah said, the grant money is always wonderful, and then we own it afterwards. So I just want to make sure that's maybe between now and then, there is a plan of what will happen if the funds aren't there, instead of having another vehicle and, and the funds aren't there to maintain it or, you know, or, or have someone driving it. That, that, that's all.
So I can respond to that. So there is no, that's not a net add in terms of vehicles. So the current vehicle that's being replaced is one that probably would have had to come to capital for replacement for the funding for in the next fiscal year.
Yeah.
So this, essentially, this grant is actually looking to, to pay for something we would have had to pay for anyways in capital.
Yeah, but probably not $80,000.
No, it's not 80,000, but it's $80,000 includes the person, the staff, too, right? Mark, that includes the staff.
Yeah, so I think that getting a little, a little confused here. So a vehicle, a new vehicle would cost about $80,000. This grant is going to pay for that. The town is not paying for that vehicle. We're replacing a vehicle for $80,000. That's a good thing, free money coming in to pay for a new vehicle. If the question is in terms of the part-time transportation coordinator, who's making somewhere around $22,000 if we can afford that person three years from now, I'm very ready to have that conversation three years from now for 2021.
And also in replacing, because now you're, you're also bringing a vehicle, even though you're going to replace a vehicle, you're bringing a vehicle that probably is, is close to two and a half times what you would have been spending on replacing the sedan. So, so, yeah.
So the vehicle, the vehicle won't be replaced in three years, though. It'll probably be, what, seven years, seven, eight years?
Probably, yeah, probably.
Okay, I'm, you know, I'm just going, just for the future, too. Like I said, the grant money always sounds wonderful, and then all of a sudden, as soon as that grant money stops, now we're, we're stuck with, with adding something to the budget. So that's all. I just want to make sure that we have, as the time goes on, we have a plan for where that's going to, where that's going to fit in.
Yeah, I think that this, this is the plan, though, is that to try and find alternative funds rather to use taxpayer funds. This is the type of plan that I would have seven years from now, is the same plan that we have now.
Okay, perfect.
Rather than use taxpayer funds, we, we find grants to find these new vehicles. That's, as I said, that's my, sort of my general philosophy.
All right, great. All right, great, thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
All right, great, any other questions? I don't, we don't need a vote on this one, it was more of just a presentation, so. All right, wonderful, and your senior's trip to Falmouth looked nice.
It did look nice. It looked, it was a foggy day, I think, but I think Chris knows a little bit about fog down in Falmouth, too, so.
All right, great, thanks a lot.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, so the next item we have is the Common Trial Traffic Pattern, everyone's favorite topic. All right, we have the team here. Can you guys hear us okay?
We can.
All right, great, so...
We're back. Just like we promised, six weeks later, we're back. So just as a quick instruction, I'm going to turn it over to Lance. We, you know, we met on June 8th with the board, presented some, after our three-week trial of the traffic changes to parallel parking, there were some concerns about the width of the road, some of the other, you know, initial thoughts on that trial. We made some changes. We gave it six weeks, and I'm going to share my screen. We have a quick PowerPoint. We'll walk through that and then talk about what our recommendations are and what the board would like to do moving forward on a permanent level. So I'm going to share my screen.
So, good evening, everyone, good to see you again. So in terms of changes, if you recall, what we did was, we widened the roadway widths on the main, the two main travel lanes and in the parking spots on both sides by about a foot in each location. So to see how people experienced that, we conducted a couple trials. Kittleson did a survey during the last farmer's market on June 24th. They get about 49 total responses, which is about 10 or 15 more than the last time they get it, which is good. They, you know, they only found really about, you know, 42% of the respondents, you know, preferred the new parallel parking to the angled, previous angled. But 56% of the respondents preferred the lane changes at South and Central, which we've already agreed to enact, so that's good. In terms of our online survey, we only get about 100, or around 100 responses on this one, which is about a quarter of what we got last time proportionally. But again, we only found about, you know, 18.8% of the respondents preferred the new parallel parking to the previous angle parking, once again. However, we did have 68% of the respondents preferred the lane changes at South and Central, which we agreed to enact, so that's good. So it's still a majority there. So still, overall, you know, not a very positive response in terms of what we're getting, in terms of feedback for that, the parallel parking situation. In my experience, it seems to work, and it seems to work better, and that's, so people in general preferred the widened lane and widened parking to the previous iteration, where things were a little narrower. So they did like it better, but they did still prefer the angled parking to the widened situation that we have now. So we also conducted with the police department, we asked them to collect a little speed data on the entryway from Main Street, just to see, we had reports of people feeling like people were entering there very fast, so we just wanted to get some data on that to kind of confirm what people are experiencing. And we actually found that this people, the speed at which people were entering and leaving that Main Street part of the Common wasn't actually that bad. You know, the posted speed limit's 20, they set up their enforcement limit to 26, and really, you know, they found 0% above that limit. So during that, you know, six-day period, six-to-seven-day period where they were testing at least, so really not a significant number of people speeding or anything from the data we collected, anyway. So in terms of next steps, what we were considering, you know, our recommendation right now is probably to, you know, return to the angled parking potentially, but, you know, have a three-foot parking offset to allow for the creation of a five-foot pedestrian walkway. And so you can see below from the picture, there's turning analysis, which was done by Kittleson for us. So it's kind of the best of both worlds in some ways, you know, we get to go back, we want to make sure that, you know, we believe, you know, people's opinion is heard. We think the parallel parking is a viable option, but maybe not right for this time. So this way, we can still potentially get the pedestrian walkway to protect people who are exiting their vehicles and accessing the Common back and forth. Chris, would you like to add anything to any of that?
Yeah, I think just going back in the history of this, you know, Gordon Green, who was a previous planning board member, has, you know, been pushing, along with some others, you know, that we need a sidewalk around the outside of that Common fence, really to protect people as they're walking around the Common, getting out of their vehicles, and getting to the crosswalk locations and onto the Common. So, you know, this trial, it was, I, it was a great experience. I think it was, you know, from an engineering standpoint, and I know Paige would agree from a planning standpoint, you know, these type of trials and experiences are, can be a lot of fun in our world. We don't get to do this a lot, so, you know, it was good to see that it does work. Parallel parking is something that people are able to do. Even this afternoon, they, or this morning, they had, the library had an event up there, and parallel parking works, people do do it. However, you know, the online survey does show that 81% of the people that responded are not a fan of it. So I think what that tells us is that it does push some people away from stopping at the Common, stopping at the stores. When the Common is busy, you know, they're just going to drive down the street and potentially not, not visit the businesses around the Common. You know, we can fit the sidewalk in there, we can keep, go back to the angled parking, and we have some other techniques, you know, coming in from Main Street, some striping we're going to do, to kind of funnel the traffic around that corner, around the new islands that are there, into the outside lane. So we have some other things we're going to do, along with the island down at South and Central Street. But I think at this point, our recommendation is to go back to the angled parking. We will work on relocating that curbing, if that's the desire of the board, to create that five-foot sidewalk outside of the fence, on the school street side of the Common. So I think from there, we're going to open it up and see what you guys think.
All right, great. So, I mean, for me, I kind of, I was a little indifferent. I feel like now that the noise has settled about change, you know, it's working, but I kind of thought myself, if I go up to the farmer's market, you know, me personally, would I rather parallel park over my left shoulder or angled parking in? And, you know, for me, I'd probably rather angled park than parallel park, although, you know, I think, I think we know it's working and it's slowing down traffic, but it's really only full right now Thursday nights is when all those spots are full to really slow down traffic. So, you know, for me, I think this was the purpose of a trial, and I think it's commendable that you guys, you know, did so many surveys and the data and the police, you know, going out and doing speed things, but that's why we do a trial. You know, people may not notice when they're driving around the Common that those lanes were widened, or that the parking spots are widened. And how many tweaks you've really done along the way to get where we are today, so thank you for that. And I know that there's a lot of black paint that you can kind of see, so Chris and I talked about, like, we need to, like, rip off a new piece of paper almost, and, you know, wherever we decide, just kind of, kind of clean it up. But, you know, for me, I like the recommendation, and I just, I hope taxpayers know, talking about grants, you know, it's, it can be frustrating sometimes to hear the narrative people put out that just aren't necessarily always true. So this isn't the town, you know, frivolously running trials, this is through a grant and the purpose of the trial and why we're here, and I think it's kind of a good case study in, you know, something didn't work, or the town residents did not prefer this. So for me, I think it's a win with the changes down at South Street, the pedestrian sidewalk on the inside, but the ability to keep the angled parking. And would the parking on the outside go away, or would that stay?
That'll go away. So parallel parking on both sides will go away.
Okay.
That way, we can keep that back-out buffer that was there previously. It'll be a little, it won't be as wide as it was. It was about 12 feet wide previously, so we'll drop that down to nine feet, but that does eliminate parallel parking on both sides of the street.
And net space-wise, where are we, plus or minus, or even?
We're even.
Okay.
If we were going to keep the parallel, I think there are a couple spots that probably, we would recommend that they go away. The couple down past Bank of America, just before Bay Colony's entrance, you know, we did hear from Bill Buckley that those couple of parking spaces were making it difficult for their employees to exit onto the Common. So if we were to keep parallel parking, we would be down probably two spaces. So we'll go back to the 19 that were there with the angled parking.
Okay. So, I mean, I'm good with the recommendation the team has made. Any thoughts, questions, observations from the group?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, first of all, it worked. You know, what you guys did worked. It showed us a lot. And really, whether you liked the parallel parking or not, it slowed down traffic, really did, I think, quite a bit. So I can see, same as Leah, you know, either way, going back to parallel, but I just wanted you guys to know, you know, your project worked. And I also liked the two different signs that were in different areas. One, I think at the end of Mechanic Street, when it comes on, where you come on and it says 20 miles an hour, I think that's a great sign. And the one further down, that I know Paige has always been saying, you know, slow down, use your directional, and be courteous. If that was your idea, Paige, kudos to you, but that sign is an excellent sign further down also. Keep those.
Thank you.
Yeah, for me, for me, I could have gone either way. The only, I'm kind of glad that, you know, extremely glad that we did the trial, and tried the widening, too, and didn't just, you know, say, okay, didn't work, did work. The only thing for me, I think, I didn't have one person tell me that they liked it, so I think I would have leaned towards us going back, not just for a personal reason, because I don't mind parallel parking, but I just feel that the community didn't want it, so, or at least the people that I was talking to. So same thing, kudos for trying and all the time and effort you put in. Like Doc said, it's not that it didn't work, I guess it's just not preferred, so.
Yeah, of course.
Can we comment now on next steps in terms of exit to Coacassit and Mechanic, as well as the northbound side? That's Coacassit Street, right, I'm heading north?
Yep.
Can we comment on that now, like, in terms of next steps, or do we have to wait for a different?
Well, I think, I think we talked about that a little bit back on June 8th. You know, the concept over there is going to be similar, in my opinion, it should be similar to what we plan to do at the South Street and Central Street exit, where we do a stamped concrete, you know, island, to delineate the inside lane from the outside lane, to make people know that they shouldn't be exiting from the inside lane. So my thought is that, you know, we could, at the same time, we're going to do the South Street end, that stamped island, we do the Mechanic Street and Coacassit Street one at the same time.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, I know, Chris, I think at one of our subcommittee meetings, the only thing I would like to see is, and I know we don't want to put anything too raised, so we talked about the stamped, I just, maybe you guys, I know we talked about something that maybe can, is portable for you guys for the wintertime, because that would be a horror show for plowing. But, yeah, if you guys look into, you know, maybe just something that you think people aren't going to say, oh, well, I can just drive over this anyhow, you know, to, so they'll stay in their lane. I'm going to leave it up to you guys as professionals to see what there is out there that might, I know we talked about maybe something that was portable, but, you know, we also want the guys to be able to plow around the Common, and so, whatever, maybe you guys can look into what the options are, and then when we talk about it next time, you guys will come back with an excellent idea.
Yeah, and I think that's something we take in phases, or in steps, I guess. You know, we try the stamped concrete, you know, see how that works, we'll certainly look at that. If it's not working, then, you know, we can make adjustments as we go. You know, one of the things on the South and the Central Street exit, really, is the large tractor-trailers, you know, really need that extra swing room.
Yeah.
You know, as they come around the Common now, with the temporary curbing that's there, you know, they're over the yellow line, coming into, head-on into traffic as they exit onto Central Street. So that's, that's part of my concern with going with a vertical curb down there, and similar over on the other side, you know, making that turn around the Common up to Main Street, you know, with a vertical curb is going to be difficult for some of those larger trucks, as we saw with the trial.
All right, great, well, I think this was a great exercise, and, you know, different departments working together, different boards working together, subcommittees, you know, community input, the surveys that were done, so it was a lot of work. I think that we have come to a plan that the community will like, and that works for the plows and everyone else, and the drivers, and the walkers, and everyone that uses the Common and all the businesses. So it sounds to me like, based on what I'm hearing, do we want to take a motion, let's take a vote on the first one and see, no, sorry, the second one, motion to revert to angled parking. So you'd be voting for one of the two of these. So let's start with option two, if you don't mind.
Motion to revert to angled parking, but with three-foot parking offset plus two-foot existing gap, that would allow for creation of a five-foot pedestrian walkway.
Second.
And then, under further discussion, what's the date that you would be kind of rejiggering everything?
It's a good question. It's one of those things that I want, I have to work with the higher supervisor, with Sean, to find out, you know, how long it's going to take him to do that work. You know, one of the things we want to do is, as we go back to the old striping, is to make sure that we're covering all the painting clean, so that when we lay everything out and re-stripe the landlines and the parking, we have a clean surface we're working on. So that's probably going to bring a contractor in to do some sort of a surface treatment on the road. So I will have to get back, I will give that information to Bill as soon as I have it, so he can update the board with what that looks like. Obviously, anything I can get done before school starts, the better, so I'll be pushing for that.
Okay, great, well, I think the good news is, everyone's kind of used to it now, so if it does take a couple weeks, you know, we're in a good position. So we've had a motion, we've had a second, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of option two, raise your hand. All right, so it looks like we're unanimous.
Hi.
All right, great. Thanks for all your work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, great, and I think Paige is hanging on remotely, and then I see some familiar faces out there for the next one, so if you guys want to come up, I think we may need a couple more seats up here for the 119 Moore Street project. All right, and while you guys are coming up, I'll just kind of, I am going to turn it over to Paige to kind of set the stage, but, you know, this is a different type of project, and not something that I've seen on my four years on the Board of Selectmen, you know, it's coming to us with a different, different method. So I think tonight is really going to be for presentation and discussion. I don't anticipate, you know, just to let you know, that we'll be making a vote tonight. I think we're going to hear and educate, I mean, I've been reading about this for a week, and I still am kind of digging and have questions, and I'm eager to hear from you guys, so. So if you don't mind just introducing yourselves, and then I'm going to turn it over to Paige, just because she has a pretty good grasp on this, and I think it would be helpful for my fellow board members, just to hear some background from Paige before we launch into your presentation, if that works.
That would be fine.
Okay, all right, wonderful, so...
My name is Mike Sage, and it's my property on Moore Street that we're going to be talking about tonight, so I brought my team, and I'd like to introduce them to you. We have over here Bob Engler, who's our 40B consultant, who's done an awful lot of these, he's going to walk you through the process and explain to you why we're here in front of you. Bill Buckley, our engineer, is going to give you some information on site-specific information and history of the site. Jeremy Lake is our architect and land planner, he's going to walk you through the, a short presentation of which you had in your packet. And last, Bill Casparra, who handles our zoning issues and our strategy.
Good to see you, Bill. Good to see all of you, but it's nice to see Bill back, so. All right, great, so Paige, do you mind just kind of setting the stage, and then we'll turn it back over to the team?
Sure, thanks, Leah. So I've been asked to do this just because I've been, everybody knows, all I do is talk about housing these days, for the past two years. I did want to highlight what Leah said, that a decision and vote won't be made on this project tonight. I know there's a lot of community interest, so for the folks at home that might have missed that, this is a chance for the board to hear the presentation, and it's anticipated this will be continued to a meeting in August, so there will be more time for research and whatnot. This project that they're going to present, I won't get into the details, but it's entitled Moore Street Condominiums, and it's being filed under Chapter 40B. Now, we all hear of 40B typically as a negative. In the past, it's been housing projects that were forced upon the town. As you know, we've had our share of that, and the town is now at 12.8-plus% affordable housing, which means we are, we are not required to pass 40B projects. Anything that's done is at the local, at the town's initiative. So you wonder, well, why, you know, everybody knows 40Bs are quote-unquote "bad," why would this be doing? Is this circumventing zoning? Why? And the reason being is that really, in this state, is the only way to build affordable housing. And so the developer has applied under what's called a local initiative program, and Bob Engler will explain that better than I can, but what that means is that the selectmen are being asked to partner on this application. And again, why would the selectmen do that? I think, based on the conversation on housing that I've had, and I know that a lot of community members have participated in it, there is a missing, call it a missing middle, a missing section of housing in our community. We have big houses, we have apartments, but where do the folks go that want to downsize and whatnot? So I think this project is being proposed to meet that need. The proposed project, being a 40B, is required to be, have affordable component, at least 25% would be affordable. This is an ownership project, so it's not rental, as we've seen with, say, the Lodge and the Sylvan over on Fisher Street, those are rental, this would be affordable, it would be ownership. And lit projects, like all 40B projects, are subject to profit limitations. So while every developer, obviously, is going to build to make some profit, any 40B project is limited in the profit. So again, this is a mechanism in the state in order to obtain affordable housing. Our zoning just does not allow it. This is a six-acre parcel, and you'd be lucky to fit five or six homes on this property. This is a property that is identified in our draft housing production plan as a possible site. It is relatively isolated, it contains a historic house on it that will be preserved and converted into housing. It is served by sewer and water, and is located just about a mile from Mansfield Train Station. So I just wanted to set that stage. The Board of Selectmen cannot deny this project. The Board of Selectmen cannot deny this project, so if the Board of Selectmen opt not to support by signing on to this project, it doesn't make the project go away. They will then be able to still apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals. It is the Zoning Board of Appeals that will grant approval. What's being asked of the Board of Selectmen is to partner with them. Now, that's, and that's what the selectmen is going to be looking at, I'm sure, is how to determine whether this is in the community's best interest, whether to partner. So I think that's what the discussion's going to be over the next month or so, as we figure this out. And basically, I've suggested that, I have a little timeline that I came up with, that we would have an initial project presentation tonight. After tonight's meeting, we would suggest that the department heads and staff meet with the developers and review the site just for things like, you know, water, sewer, whatnot. These are concept plans, they're not detailed, but in general, if we can suss out any issues early on, that's always beneficial. We do that for pretty much any project. I would suggest that the developers submit a written narrative describing the clear benefits to the community that the project offers. And then we also have that opportunity to receive input from stakeholders during this time. I would suggest that at the earliest we'd be discussing this again would be at August 17th. That would be the second meeting with the Board of Selectmen. At that time, there could be a report from the town departments and staff and that's when the discussion of community benefits and the future process could occur. With that, I think I'll hand it over, but I just wanted to assure folks that why this is being proposed, while it seems crazy, it is a mechanism by which to get affordable housing and this community does need affordable housing, so pass that on.
So our decision would be if we, what we're deciding, you know, when we do decide is if we're partnering under this local initiative program and then it will go through the, you know, everything that comes after that. So that's our role here and why this is here and not, you know, like we typically see, you know, going to the planning board. So that step is what we're here to talk about. Okay? Any questions for Paige? No, okay, all right, great, gentlemen?
Yes, Bob Engler, thank you Paige for the introduction. I've been with SEB for 50 years, I've been involved with 40B since 1970, so that's 51 years, and 150 towns, or maybe more than that even, but the point is, I was on the task force to help create the LIP program. What happened back in 1990 was, as Paige said, everything looked antagonistic with 40B, developers came in and did what they wanted, and the state and the legislature said, let's do something where the towns can be proactive and be part of a program that they get to negotiate with the developer in a cooperative way. And so the LIP program came in and what the benefit to the developer was, there's no requirement for specific financing, where if you go to mass housing, mass housing partnership, mass development, whatever, you have to live with their financing rules. Here, there's an odd quirk of the legislature that said the technical assistance of DHCD would constitute a subsidy, so you can finance it out of pocket, you can go anywhere you want with the money. So the developer's happier with that because it's easier, but there's a role for the town to play, which is to help negotiate something that they like. And most of these LIPS that I've been involved with, there's a lot of mitigation, there's 150-unit rental, there's traffic, there's sidewalks, there's all kinds of things that get negotiated before you even get to the zoning board. The nice thing in this project is it's small, it's isolated, as Paige said, you're not looking at a lot of traffic, so the negotiations have already started. In fact, the whole idea of this project has shifted from what Paige and others have said they'd like to see in the town. So some of that negotiation has happened and you're going to see a project that's hopefully well-received, but it continues to go through you, so when you finally sign it as a concept, goes to DHCD, they say it's okay, it goes to your zoning board, it's got to go through its paces, traffic, engineering, all the impacts, just like it would anywhere else. So you're not asked to look at things like in the weeds or those kind of things, you're asked to say, is this a good project for the town, is it a good place? And that's why the LIP program is there to say, it's a cooperative venture between town, DHCD, and the developer, and that's really, really what it comes down to in a nutshell, that's why we're here and we think it works for everybody. So you can look at the specific project now that that's just the framework.
So good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group, and what I've just put up on the screen is what's the existing conditions plan for the site, so Mike has asked me to just talk about the site briefly, Paige has already given you some of the highlights, talk about some of the, talk about the site itself and some of the issues, some of the history of it in the past. So this is a, it's a six-acre parcel of land, look if my pointer here, so this is a six-acre parcel of land, so this is Moore Street. I'm not sure it's going to, thing. Moore Street is from the, if you're looking at the top of this, that would be coming from Foxborough, the bottom of it is going toward Foxborough, I mean, going toward Mansfield. You can see the Bleachery Pond there is in the lower-left corner, so this parcel of land's about six acres. It has a, it has 200 feet along Moore Street, you can see the triangle there on the right, and that is where the driveway comes in. I know it's kind of shaded out here so you can't see it, but there's an existing house with some outbuildings on here, and for years, this was Willow Grove Nursery, and they ran their facility out of that and actually years ago, I've been told that this was the owner of the, all of the factories you see around there, the ones in Foxborough and the ones in Mansfield that have been torn down along the railroad tracks. And this was the owner's building, he set it up so that he can look at all his factories, although it's all grown in now. As Paige said, the site is served by municipal water, Foxborough Municipal Water comes in, it is also served by sewer, so that's a good thing, and the reason for that is is because one of the issues they have here is this is in a, what's called a future aquifer area for the town of Foxborough, it's not a true Zone 2, which means water isn't drawn from it for our wells, but, you know, it could possibly be someday is what was identified back in the 80s. So what does that mean? That means that your sewerage flow is limited and being on sewer is a good thing because now your effluent isn't going into the ground and you'll still get recharged through the drainage system through the stormwater regulations. The site was permitted back in 2008 for 33, what I would call contractor bays, so they're, you know, small bays that have a small office component and then the rest would be warehouse, and typically they were rented by small contractors, tradesmen, they put their equipment in there, they could park their vehicles in there. It was about 43,000 square feet, gross square feet of building, there were seven buildings and there was 33, 33 units, as we said. That was never built, and we're in here today, as you look up the top, I know it's hard to read, but as you look to the left top, wrap around to the right, to the top and then to the right, that's all conservation land. So this conservation land actually stretches, it's part of, it's part of several different conservation pieces of property that have been obtained over the years. This is called the Rumford River Green Belt and it runs from here to Oak Street and actually a big chunk of it was just added for the River Ridge subdivision. Across Oak Street, right there at the light, there's a right-of-way that goes to the back along 95, that takes you into what's called the Murray's Brook area, which takes you into the Old Greep property area, which again is conservation land, which takes you behind the houses on Common Eye right up against 95. It's probably close to 500 acres, so, you know, a solid 30, half of that, that north side is conservation. Bleachery Pond itself is conservation, across the street is conservation, it's all part of the Green Belt. There's one single-family house there to the right, up in the right-hand corner that's there now, and then down over to the left lower, you can see, that's the old Bleachery buildings. So when you drive down there, drive past, you can see the old factories that are there, the chimney's gone, but most of the factory's there and it's actually a thriving little area, most of the buildings are being used except for the one that just had a fire a year or so ago. So the site, in our opinion, is, it's a good site for this type of density, it's right next to a commercial site, it's near conservation land, it's, we really have one residential neighbor and then as you go down Moore Street, there are single-family homes and duplexes as you head down toward, toward Co Casa Street, more up toward this end is where the singles and twos are.
Great, thank you. Can you just point to where the houses, is it what's outside of the red or?
Yes, it's right.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
It'll be clearer in the next diagram, too.
Right near the driveway.
Okay.
Jeremy?
Yeah, so good evening, I'm Jeremy Lake with Union Studio Architecture and Community Design, we're down in Providence, I'm a senior associate there and I'm the director of our community planning type of work, so I'm excited to be here, thank you for having us. If you want to go, yeah, we can start here. This is an aerial image of the existing conditions, you might be able to see some of the things Bill was describing a little more clearly. The existing house on the site is the rectangle sort of in the middle, right there. He described the existing single-family residence that is our neighbor, which is up in that corner. You can certainly see the factory down in the lower-left corner, the town conservation land to the north and the pond, Moore Street crossing the pond there to the south. So the existing site has not only that existing house that we're retaining, but there are also a number of other smaller structures, outbuildings, an old garage, those are all coming out, so it's just the existing house itself that we'll be retaining. If you want to go to the next one, Bill? And so this is our proposed scheme, I know it's a little bleached out up there, but hopefully you can get a sense of the overall layout and I'll describe it to you. So the entry point is off of that triangular piece that makes its way all the way out to Moore Street, so we are proposing utilizing the existing drive, are you going to pass those out? Thank you. Utilize the existing drive coming in off of Moore Street, there's also an existing bridge that takes you over the Rumford River, so that would be our proposed entry into the new community as well. As you come in on that lane off to the right, what you'll see is the first of several small green spaces or pocket greens that we're proposing, so we wanted to propose a lot of shared, common outdoor green spaces for the residents here, and so that would be the first of a couple of them there to the right. As that lane continues to come through, you can see it delivers you to the existing house, which is the gray square sort of in the middle, which we're really seeing as sort of the central focal point for the whole neighborhood. And then the lane continues along, loops back up and around and back out again, so we have a nice internal loop which will make it really convenient for residents, emergency access, deliveries, all those sorts of things. So circulation is pretty straightforward and conventional. The series of buildings along the pond itself, we have five cottage duplexes there, so there's 10 units that are along the pond edge, so you have four of them to the east as you first come in and then another six over to the west. But you'll see in the middle, we've actually preserved a stand of existing trees that we thought were in good shape and would be nice to kind of keep some of the natural edge of the pond there. And we also have a small green space that's just in front of the existing home, so that from Moore Street, you'll still be able to look and see the existing home as you would today, so it still has the character that you've known over time and the home's still sort of respected in terms of its place in the history here. And that little green space also provides the residents with a common space where they can walk out, even if your unit's in the back-left corner, you could walk out and then actually enjoy being out on the pond, so it becomes a community amenity there as well. Behind the existing house, we have another green space, so that space there, the buildings that are on either side of it basically front on that little green and that green then connects back to the town conservation land behind. So for that back portion of the site, we have 10 buildings that are fourplexes instead of duplexes, so those buildings each have two units on the ground floor and two units on a second floor. Each of those has their own garage space and a second space in a driveway, we'll show you the units in a minute. But the intention there really was so that, was to have those buildings front on those communal green spaces, we'll show you an image of a project we've done that has a similar approach. So I pointed out the small space when you first come in in the top right, the larger green that comes off of the existing house in the middle, and then we have another sort of linear green space on the western edge as well for those last couple of buildings over there. So all in, we're proposing 52 units, so that's 40 units in the fourplexes, 10 units in the duplexes, and the existing house, we're going to divide into two units because it's a really big house and we think it makes more sense to subdivide that into two smaller units moving forward. Each of the units has two parking spaces per unit and then we have additional guest parking on top of that. Why don't you go ahead to the next one, Bill? So this is an aerial perspective view, this is the only thing that wouldn't be in the packets that you would have had previously but is in the one we gave you now, so again, the entry road is there off to the right, you can see the little bridge where you come in, and now you can start to see the scale of the cottage duplexes as they kind of work their way around the pond edge. The existing grove of trees we're trying to protect there, the small green that's effectively the front lawn of the existing home there in the middle, and then beyond that, you can see the fourplex buildings, how they front on some of those green spaces, the loop road as it works its way around. And we've tried to make several connections also for potential trails into the town conservation land, so that can really be an amenity for the residents to utilize as well, and they can really become sort of some of the care, care keepers of that space. Why don't you go ahead to the next one, Bill? In terms of the units themselves, again, not going to go through this in great detail, but just so you're aware, these are, this is half of a fourplex building, so on the left is the ground floor plan, on the right is the second floor plan, again, I know these are hard to make out with the screen, but the lower unit has one of the two garages in the back and then it has a front porch in the front that would be connected to those linear greens, those pocket parks. Living, dining, kitchen is in the front corner where it gets a lot of great exposure and would allow for an entry so that guests could come visiting, would enter into the living spaces. We then have two bedrooms, one to the back, one to the front, that sort of wrapped that space with all the bathroom and services in the back-left corner. That lower unit is approximately 1,450 square feet as a two-bedroom. Upstairs, there's a second unit, the stair coming in off of the back at the second garage, delivers you up to a unit that's very similar in its layout, living, dining, kitchen out at the exposed corner, two bedrooms behind that. This one also includes an office in the back that, there's a dormer out over the garages, so it's effectively like a two-plus den if it were an apartment, so that one's closer to 1,650 square feet. Bill, if you want to keep going? And this is, again, sort of half of its elevation, so what you see on the left is the front that would be mirrored again, so here you can start to see that double-height porch, so on the lower level, that's the entry for the ground floor unit, up above, that's the balcony off of the living spaces for the upstairs unit, and then you can see on the side how the scale of it is really meant to be treated like a single-family house at two, two-and-a-half stories, a large bay feature there that's off of the kitchen and how it steps down to the garages in the back. Next one, Bill? So the other type are those cottage duplexes, again, I know it's a little bit hard to make out, but on the bottom of the page would be the road where you would approach, so there's a front porch which would be the primary access that enters into a living, dining, kitchen that goes all the way through the unit to a back porch that would look out over the pond. There's also a one-car garage that's there in the lower-left, and then the primary bedroom is there on the first floor as well, so the option of a master down in this particular type. And then upstairs, we have a little loft space in the middle and a pair of bedrooms, one in the front, one in the back, so these would be three-bedroom units plus the den, if you will, at about 1,950 square feet. Next one, Bill? And so again, this is basically half of one of those duplexes, so on the left you can see, really, they are attached by their garages, so the primary living areas are what are separated and what's give it the scale of a cottage, of attached cottages, if you will. And so again, there are 10 of these units total, and then if you can go to one more. And so this last page just showing on the left, that's the existing house, again, I know it's a little bit hard to make out, but the point is that the new architecture we're proposing is really meant to really pick up on the scale and character of the existing home, so a lot of similar details, the front porches, you know, the treatment of the eaves, you know, window proportions, all those things were meant to kind of pick up on the existing house, which obviously also picks up on the traditional character of Foxborough in general, right? So not proposing anything sort of outlandish here, it's meant to be very much in keeping with the scale and character of the residential architecture of Foxborough. And on the right is a precedent project, this is a cottage court we did in Concord, it's called Concord River Walk, and while those are only one-and-a-half-story cottages, not two-story fourplexes, you can get a sense of the scale and the character of those pocket greens, those shared green spaces. So again, those would be heavily landscaped, existing trees if we can, if there's some that we can preserve. This one even shows at the end there, that's a little communal amenity, that's a little pavilion, that's a screened-in porch, so a place for the residents to gather. But the point is, while we do have streets and some of the entries are off of the streets, we also have these communal green spaces that we think will be a really lovely amenity, and again, those then tie out to the town conservation land, so the open spaces are all connected and we have sidewalks throughout that connect all these things, so it should be a wonderful place to live and lots of amenities and options to get out and about, so. And I think our last page was just a typical section of the, really, it's conventional wood frame construction, so again, nothing special to really worry about there. So that's an overview of the project, certainly happy to answer any more specific questions.
I'd just like to back up for a minute on affordability issues, you know, affordability is mixed throughout, 25%, but you won't see or know which ones are affordable, but it's all governed by the regulations on the DHCD, so I call it workforce housing, people call it something else, affordable, subsidized, whatever, it's really for people who work between and make between $60,000 and $90,000 and are priced out of today's market. So really, what you're doing is helping people that work in the community, because 70% of the units likely, or even higher, by lottery, but go to people who have ties to the community and DHCD will work with you on that. So it's really benefiting the workforce here that can't buy anything in town. And these affordable units stay affordable forever, the new sales in the future will go to somebody else who's affordable, earning no more than 80% of the Boston 80% of the Boston area median income. So, you don't make a windfall profit by staying in the deal for five years and then selling to the market. They're going to be affordable. The market units go for whatever the market is, and it's worked for 40 years now, so we're excited by this.
And we distributed those, that 25% we did, by type. So, 25% of the flats, so 25% of the 40, 10, are affordable units, and they're distributed throughout, as Bob mentioned. And likewise with the duplexes of the 10 duplex units, three of those will be the affordable units, and they're distributed throughout. So, again, we've had great success with this in previous projects. They're blended in, they fit right into the community. Generally, people don't even know any better, and that's the way it should be, so.
And you guys don't have to answer this now, but just things to think about as we come back, like, will this be a publicly maintained row? Will people have condo fees? Must be privately maintained? Kind of, you know, just some of those things as we dig deeper in to kind of let us know as we think about, you know, resources on the town and things like that. So, I don't know that we're going to get into every, I mean, we certainly can, but I think the next meeting, we kind of intended to maybe get into more detail once we've seen this, had a chance to digest it. Mr. Seg, maybe we could even, you know, I don't know, walk the property, I don't know, you know? So, I'm a visual person, but, you know...
Quick question. Did you say that the market rate ones also always stay at market rate? Did I misunderstand that?
Yeah, the market rate flows with the market. The 75-25 mix continues, but the affordable are governed by who they get to sell, and a monitoring agent helps a buyer or seller in the future sell an affordable unit to somebody else who's affordable. The market peoples just work the way the market does. They hire somebody.
Okay. I thought you said that, that's, did anyone else pick it? Well, I thought you said in the market rate ones, we'll sell for market rate, again. So, I didn't know if that was locked into a market rate. Like, in other words, I could list my house at market rate, but I could say I want $100,000 more.
Well, that's what market rate is, is whatever the market demands.
Whatever the market will bear. Buyer and seller have to agree.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, so, but, you know, there's, being a licensed Realtor, there's a lot of these properties throughout the town that, like, you may not know, you know, this condo on Co Casa Street is part of a project, that this particular unit, you know, is deed restricted to stay affordable.
That's exactly right.
So...
Keep in mind that the permitting granting authority is the Board of Appeals, and all those specific conditions that you pointed out will be in that permit from the Board of Appeals. So, all those specific questions will be answered and conditioned by the Appeals Board.
Okay.
And that's the ZBA, is what you're referring to?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, we've talked a lot about housing over the last couple of years, and, I mean, it's not Mr. Leek's first time in front of us. I think you were in some of the housing ones. I don't know if meetings and other people have been in, but I've definitely seen things like this presented in other communities that I've thought, you know, wow, this is interesting and, you know, something that could be possible.
I think it's incredibly interesting, and it's right in Paige's wheelhouse, if she's still there.
Yeah.
You know, and it's something, I think, you know, five years ago, Paige was envisioning something like this. I don't want to speak for Paige, but my goodness, this is, at least, working with you for the past five years, since I've been on the board, this is something that's close to coming to fruition.
And with the sewer and, you know, the infrastructure is a big piece.
It's also near a mile from the train station.
Yeah, it's...
A good location.
It's there.
There's not a lot of traffic on Moore Street anyways, and this won't be, you know, a heavy lift. This whole idea came out of the fact that my wife and I want to downsize, and we have no place to go in town to downsize.
Because you want the garage, and you want, you know, you want the office, and you want...
Exactly. But we want, you know, half of what we have, and there's no place to go.
Yeah.
As well as the prices, as you know, because you're a Realtor too, have gone crazy.
Yeah, it's...
Just insane.
Yeah, it's insane. It really is.
If I could just say a couple of words here. I do, you know, this is something that Paige and I have talked about for a long time. It's been involved with the, involved with the housing projects that we've been looking at, trying to come up with ideas that would make sense for Foxborough. Because, you know, there are so many different ways you could approach this, but at the end of the day, the reality is that the cost of land is X and the cost of housing is Y. And you end up with really high housing, land costs these days because there's only so much of it. And it was, I couldn't help but think about this when we were talking about, you were pointing out the land earlier, that there is so much conservation land in town that actually puts pressure on the value of land. So, this is an opportunity where this particular parcel is bumping up against conservation land that will be, intended to be protected, and actually create a housing opportunity for people that we've been hearing for, Mike, how many years now? We've been going to senior meetings with Council on Aging, looking for folks to do exactly what Mike just described, you know, to get some housing they can downsize into and still stay in Foxborough.
Yes, I think there's no doubt, no one can argue that we need more housing, we need more affordable housing. I think the question for this board now and what we need to digest over the next month is, what does this mean to our schools? What does this mean to our, you know, kind of everything? Even having the Historical Society weigh in. I think it's just doing that check-in with all the department heads, even, you know, Bill, I think there's probably some work, I don't know if it's your office or Paige, but what does this mean for the town? You know, where we partner with you, what costs are we going to, you know, possibly incur? Or what grants are available to help cover, you know, consultants, or, you know, whatever it may be? So, you know, the project, I think that there's definitely a need for something like this in town. It's now just, what's all the, you know, other ramifications to all the other resources in town and departments? And, you know, conservation, what do they think? That I think we need to go back and do some homework, and then come back and dig in at that next layer of the onion before we make a decision. And, you know, to be honest, I got to tell you, I don't know if we'll be able to make a decision next meeting, you know? There's a lot of information, a lot to digest, but I think, I think that sounds like a plan that I'm comfortable with for this project.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like it's a beautiful project. The only thing that holds me back is we have a lot of projects. We've got something coming up on South Street. We've got the fire station. We've got Wall Street. We have something possibly, I know it's, you know, will probably happen, I don't know, on Walnut, which is supposed to be, to help with the seniors. My question is, you know, how many, how many pieces here are going to be affordable? Obviously, is the 25%. So, I'm worried about, do we know what our population is right now, Bill, by any chance?
A little over 18,000.
Okay, so, a little over 18,000. We have, with the projects that are, that we've already been talking about, we could jump our population, especially two- and three-bedrooms now. So, I live in a development that is two-bedroom. Well, there are families of six and seven living in those two bedrooms, okay? So, there's no control on how many people will move into these. We could be jumping our population by, you know, in the next, with the projects that are coming up, by 2,000 people. And so, my big concern is what it's going to do to police, what it's going to do to fire, the schools. You know, you've got the Borough School right down the street. The one good thing is they just, they just did the Borough all over, and they have a little more, a little more space. If any of the schools, that would probably be the school that you would want, the type of this project. But there's so many projects going in town, that's the only thing that, that I worry about. It's, obviously, you have good people, you're putting this, a project like this together. There's a reason why Foxborough is zoned the way it is. So, a piece of property like this, like, I think somebody, I don't know who said, might have been Bill, but, or no, somebody said normally you would probably be able to turn around and put five houses on here. So, I'm more on the people, what these projects, what it's going to do to our population, and are we going to be able to absorb that? Because right now, those people who are hurting for housing are also hurting because what their tax rate is and how much they're paying in taxes. So, if everything is going to get bumped up, and next you know Chief Grace is going to come in and say, I need five more policemen, you know, Chief Keller will say, we need a substation, we need five more firemen, I just don't know if we're going to be able to sustain that. There's so many projects.
And I think that's the exact research that we need to do, everything you just pointed out, police, fire. And maybe Paige, you can even, you know, possibly give us an inventory of what's pending out there, just so we have, you know, a holistic view. I would like planning to weigh in. You know, we don't do this every day. We're not as familiar, you know, curious what they think. I've seen you guys kind of have informal discussions about projects before. I don't know if that's possible, but, you know, hearing from different people and taking that all in, you know, in order for us to make an informed decision about if the project's right for the town or not. Well, not if it's right for the town, but if it's right for us to partner, you know?
Right. Normally, some of the boards ask all the departments, as you're just indicating, to give them a report on what they think it's all about. Collect that information, raises specific questions, and raise it with the development team to answer those questions.
Yeah.
But again, it's at the conceptual level. You can't get every answer done. People want to say, what's the seismic test mean if there's an earthquake? We don't get into that at this level. This is the beginning level, and then we get into it later on with the zoning board.
I think what's actually even more interesting about this type of proposal is that you actually do have some say in terms of, in negotiating capability, which a lot of times you don't because it doesn't come to the board for approval. So, all the, a lot of the projects that you've already talked about, are mentioned, are ones you really have no control over, yet you do have some level of control on this, which does provide the ability to do some things which would be helpful for the community
Just first, a quick observation to maybe help mitigate Stephanie's concerns is that we are increasing the property tax base here, because this is new development, so that's not necessarily a two, you know, prop-two-and-a-half issue per se. We're increasing the tax base. But my, what I wanted to point out actually was in Paige's initial commentary around Chapter 40B, and I'm learning more about 40B as we go. What, the picture that she painted, maybe not, you know, she mentioned it seems crazy to use 40B. So, and I'm not trying to paint what she said in a specific light, but 40B is, as I understand it, we, this project needs 40B to move forward. There's no other way to do it. And so, 40B means more state control over Foxborough Town Resources, and that's the way I'm interpreting it.
No, it doesn't mean anything like that in terms of the town's resources, only as regulations that govern this type of development.
Right.
So, as Paige said, if your zoning doesn't allow the density to create affordable housing, after all, the affordable housing is created here totally internally on the development itself, the 75% have to support the loss of building housing that's affordable. There's a significant real cash loss when you're building housing that sells for below what housing costs to build. But that's handled internally. So, that's all that 40B does. It has no impact on your grant writing or your resource. In fact, it adds to the ability to capture resources if you're doing affordable housing.
So, is it state subsidies? It's state subsidies for...
They look very favorably upon a lip, which means you've, so-called friendly 40B, you've been a partner and you've supported it. So, that's a good thing. But you can't get affordable housing if you don't have people. That's the whole issue. You can't separate out the housing and say, we don't want the population, it's all part of the package. You're just trying to make some of the population more affordable, and they'll stay that way. And the interesting thing is that you can talk about it, but town officials, speaking out of my league here, have to worry about talking about school impacts, because the Supreme Court has ruled that that's, you know, children are protected class, and if you talk about not wanting more children in the schools, it's a liability issue that you should stay away from. You can talk to town council about that or whatever. It's not even a subject for 40B review. You can't hire somebody to say, how many kids are going to go into your school? We only want X amount, or we don't want that. So, you can talk about other things, but that's just not allowed. I just want to throw that out there for early...
One quick other point. So, one of the other concerns I've been hearing is high density in the area. So, I'm thinking about comparables, right? If we talk about Chesnut Green, I don't know if that's a comparable area in terms of the new housing we've had there over the last 20 years or so?
Like Kings Project?
I'm not sure who that...
Chesnut Green.
Chesnut Green is behind there. So, is that a similar size, or does anyone have a sense of how many units?
I don't think that was 40B, was it? It wasn't.
Not that it was 40B, but it's...
Density.
Density-wise.
The density on that project, I can answer that. The density on that project, that was part of the state hospital redevelopment plan, and the density on that project was specifically limited to the density of what we have in the R-15 zone, which is, if you look at where all Foxborough's apartments are, that's the R-15 zone. If you draw a circle around, Chesnut, Chesnut, Mechanic, Co Casa, it, pretty much that area. And it's about roughly eight units every 60,000 square feet. So, no, this is not comparable to that. We're talking about 52 units on six times 240,000 square feet. So, it's more dense.
Which is more dense? I'm sorry.
This is where more dense, this project is more dense.
This is, okay, that's all right, okay. Thank you.
And, you know, just going to all these housing plans, like, the way that I wrap my brain around it, and let me know if I am speaking out of terms, but, you know, if we're under the 10% for affordable, then developers can come in and do the 40B, and we don't have a lot of control. This is a friendly 40B where we're all over it, and we're able to say, okay, we want this to be a 40B project, and we have a little bit more control than we would if we were under the 10%.
That's correct. That's exactly right.
So...
So, under 40B, you couldn't make this an over-50 community?
An over-55...
Community.
Yes, you could. If you, if you had a specific housing need and could show DHCD that's what you wanted to do, there's a lot of 55-plus communities that are under 40B.
Yeah, okay.
And there are CCRCs, there are, you know, there's assisted living, there's all kinds of housing under 40B, single-family houses, detached. You can do whatever you want, just as long as the affordability mixes in there, and it's, it serves the purpose of what the town wants. We thought, with Paige's help, thought this was the best way to go, smaller units, not building what new developers build at 2,500 and up, and getting into those 700 or 800 or $900 million range, keeping them where people can buy on the market side as well as on the affordable side. And that's rare, because you don't find any builders that, first of all, they're tearing down and spending a lot of money on that, and then they build something new. So, that's not what we're trying to do.
Mr. Leek, go ahead, sir.
And I was just going to say, that's where you have to be careful with things like density, because it's just a math, right? It's just a calculation. So, in some ways, you're penalizing it by having smaller units, because the same square footage with bigger units would be less units, would be lower density, which sounds like a win. But I bet when you do your inventory, you'll realize what this town really needs are units of a smaller size, not a bigger size. And so you've got to be careful with the density and stuff. I know you're trying to just visualize the density, which is a fair question, but the numerical density, I always think, is a tricky thing. You've got to be careful because what's in the numbers, you know? Let us count 100 feet of the town conservation land as part of the site, and suddenly the number plummets or, you know, so.
And the equation continues to go back to the cost of land. You know, and so to achieve a more affordable home, you have to have less land and higher density.
Exactly right.
So it works.
That's exactly right.
And you don't have to answer this question now, but maybe when you write your letter, a lot has come up in all these meetings about local preference. And I know, you know, after the unit sells, we can't necessarily control that. But if that's something you can kind of proactively speak to, you know, when you write your letter, if that's something that's possible or not, local preference comes up a lot for that initial.
Sure. That's an incentive offer to the town, and you'd get the same incentive.
Yeah.
And when I said 70% is local preference, I'm saying that's, you set up, and my son runs more lotteries than anybody in the state, and he's on this team, and you set that up so there's a local preference and there's an affirmative marketing preference. But the end of the day, whoever shows up, mostly your local people.
Right.
You're not coming 100 miles away. Years passed, it was, oh, they're going to come out of Roxbury, you know, they just found this house. No, they come out of the community, and so you might get a higher percentage. But certainly 70% would be the target.
Okay, great.
Yeah, because what Seth said about the tax base, the only thing is, Seth, I watched the Housing Authority meeting the other night, and if that Walnut Street goes in, there is no tax on that.
Well, that's a totally different project.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, we're still adding a lot of people, and we have a project that we already know is in the works, that there'll be no.
Well, I don't think we can say that accurately.
Oh, okay.
I don't think that's accurate based on when I watched the meeting. We could, we can absolutely put that the developer would have to pay taxes. That came up, right, Paige? So just to be clear, that's not necessarily true.
Oh, I thought I heard that Housing Authority does not pay taxes.
We discussed looking at payment in lieu of taxes or making sure that some mechanism in the RFP and Development Agreement to try to cover some of those costs. So it might not be technically property tax because it is Housing Authority land, but we are trying to find a way, or we are incorporating a way to recoup some financial benefit to the community.
Okay. Yeah, we realize that and definitely discuss that.
So for me, it's not, there's nothing wrong with this project.
Yeah, this is, they're still going to pay their tax bill.
This pays full taxes, unlike Housing Authority.
The big picture of what's going on in town, not this project. There's nothing wrong with this project. I just, I'm trying to keep my eye on what the big picture will be.
And even Wall Street is so conceptual right now, although the number of 250 has been thrown out there, we have no idea, you know, really what that is going to be. I don't think it's going to be any bigger than that, but it certainly, I think, could end up smaller than that, so.
Just one more question, and again, you don't have to necessarily answer it, but a thought, Mr. Say, would be, have you thought of this being an over-55 community? You know, it being in the, you know, the reason why you're thinking of downsizing.
Well, I didn't want to.
It's only 52, that's why.
I know it was close.
I didn't want to limit it, Mark, because over-55 can still buy into this.
Right.
There's no prohibition, okay? But I, we didn't want to limit it to one segment. We wanted everybody to have a fair shot.
Are you planning on staying?
Pardon me?
Are you planning on staying in this development?
Possibly, yeah.
Yourself?
He is a Foxborough resident, so he's a longtime Foxborough resident himself.
Yeah. Oh, so you don't live in the existing house? You just bought this property as an investment? You don't, in the house that's there?
Correct, right.
All right. Because when you say about downsizing, also, the over-55, I mean, there's a need for affordable housing, but I think the seniors are what we just keep hearing, that they, so, not that, I understand your point of not limiting yourself, but for me, that's all I feel like we kept hearing, is the people who already live in this town and raise their families here and want to stay here, that can't.
There's probably a fair amount of people in the same position I'm in that want to downsize, that would go into a project like this and free up their house for some family that can't find out. It's crazy out there. There's no supply.
Oh, believe me, I've said this a number of times, and we were talking about housing is, so I'm in a two-bedroom, 1,400 square foot home. That's the house we bought, and we just couldn't afford the next house in Foxborough. But now, we've come full circle, so we don't have to go anywhere. The kids are going off to school and college, so I know that feeling of being like, okay, so the need is there absolutely.
All right, so I have seen Mrs. Shea's hand up, if, is the board. I just want to, she has been very involved in the housing. And I will just ask you, if you don't mind just keeping your comments brief, because this is only kind of step one, but if you don't mind just coming up, I don't know if there's a microphone at the podium.
There is, I pushed it down because I couldn't see.
I just have a couple of.
Just tell us your name and where you live.
Hi, I'm Linda Shea. I live at 20 Market Street. So I have been on the Housing Production Plan Committee from its inception. I also worked with Bill on a housing thing that he did before we formed that, and I've been continuing our conversation on housing. And the only thing I want to point out is that affordable and low income are two different things. And what I have heard at meetings, especially at the senior center, is a lot of them mix that up, right? So if you're low income, you're not in possession of a house right now. You don't own a $500,000 home in Foxborough. But those are the people that say they need something else. And this project would fit that bill. So it's not that they can't afford it, there is no stock. So if you want to downsize, and I know lots of people, actually, I could do the same thing. I know Mike, his kids and my kids are the same age. And yes, if we wanted to do that, that's what we would be looking for, is a place that you don't have to worry about the yard, the shoveling, the plowing, and all of that, but you still have enough space to have guests.
Right.
And that sort of thing. So, but I really just want to make a point that affordable and low income are absolutely two different things. And affordable for Foxborough is going to go by the metropolitan Boston and Cambridge. So those people, and I think you quoted it, I can't remember it, but we had that information given to us, it's like in the 60,000 to.
60 to 90, I think.
90,000. Low income, or very low income, like some of the people who live on Baker Street, would not be looking to.
That would be more of like, possibly more of the Walnut Street.
That's public housing. That's right.
Exactly. And Walnut Street, my understanding is it's up to 250, and until they have a builder, we really don't know what's going to go there because we're still trying to figure that out, I think.
And the people that are going to go into Walnut Street are not the people that are going to go into this project.
Different need.
Exactly.
Right. And people who own a house now in Foxborough are not going to Walnut Street either because that's, they would have too much money for that. So that's actually probably going to be more of a low income, like our Baker Street. And Carlin and Court, those are low income.
A little bit of a mix, I would think.
Yeah, those are low income. So I just, people just mix those two terms up, affordable and low income, and they're not the same thing, and we should be mindful of that when we look at projects. So that's really all I wanted to say. But I also want to say that there are, not everyone in town is against alternative forms of housing, and I'm one of those. I mean, I own a single-family home. I've lived here over 40 years. My husband grew up in town. But I really see the need for alternative kinds of housing that we don't have here. We do need these kind of denser, compact places. We need places handicapped accessible, and we don't really have that. I think there are people that could, you know, live in an apartment or live in a townhouse, and we really don't have a lot of that here. And I think it's important that we spread our wings a little.
And as you look at it, like I said, with the sewer and the water, and it is an isolated spot, you know, you don't have a neighbor, the neighborhood that's upset, like, you know, Walnut Street, or, you know, it really, it really is a very unique location, I think. And I think that this, you know, could be a project that could fit pretty well on here, so.
We put a lot of thought into this, and we anticipated a lot of these things that we're going to discuss that have been addressed, so.
Okay, all right, great. Well, I don't want to cut it short if anyone has anything else, but I think we have the information to digest. I think a lot of us will go back and do question, you know, do some research, and we can certainly, I think it might be easiest to facilitate questions through Paige, or if we want to, you know, walk the site, maybe we reach out to Paige to help facilitate all that. And then we look forward to having you back on August 17th to hear some of that research that's been done, you know, what's this going to cost the town, what's the impact going to be to resources, what's the, if you can even, you know, what's the tax base that we would see added to the budget for that would be, you know, important as well, so.
We did have Marlene on the Zoom, I'm not sure.
Oh, okay. Marlene is on too. I don't know, Marlene, if you're just observing, has she put her hand up? No, okay. All right. All right, wonderful, thank you. So with that, I think there's a lot of homework to do, and we look forward to seeing you back again.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a couple more agenda items. We're going to move on to the Board of Selectmen appointee appointments and handbook, so. So we've got the election workers, which is kind of run-of-the-mill. We do this every year. We just need to reappoint, yeah, I think this is pretty run-of-the-mill, so I think we're probably ready for the motion on the election workers.
Motion to appoint 72 election workers for a term to end August 30th, 2022.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great. And then next is the 2021 Boarding Committee's Handbook that we've had much discussion about. I appreciate the red lines so we could see Mr. Costello's edits and then, you know, yours, Christina. And I think it ended in a good place. We had just one minor question about the signing sheet, which I'll leave to you guys, how you want to, you know, track and maintain on that.
Sure, we're going to pull the sign-up sheet off of here, and we're going to leave it on the, you know, the letters that go out.
The appointment letters.
The appointment letters, so that's all in one place.
And I do just want to make sure we have a system that we're not just sending this out, that we're, you know, following up and making sure people sign this and making sure people understand that we have this in the file, so.
We actually talked about that at length this morning. Spent about a good hour on that, on up to a particular process.
Three of us met with the, with two of the folks from the town clerk's office, and we had a lengthy discussion, and we were all very comfortable with that we have a solid tracking plan for this, for the letters, for the appointments. So we, you know, administration and town clerk's office are comfortable.
And I think not even everyone that's new, that's just reappointed, I think since it's revised, this should go out to everyone. And I don't think it has to be anything, you know, this can just be, it's here on the website, you know, go look at it, that the chairs can ask people to do.
And that's actually our plan, is to send this out electronically, provide it electronically through website, through email, but then let people know the hard copies are available, you know, if requested.
And then if boards or committee members do have questions once they've reviewed it, do you prefer that to go through their chair? Would you rather have them, reach out to them? I'm just thinking if I'm sitting on a board or committee and I get this and I have a question, you know, who am I going to go to with that?
I think those questions can come to me.
Okay, all right, great. All right, so I will not read through the entire handbook because it is long, but I have had a chance to review it. Any questions, concerns, anything?
I reviewed it also. It looks pretty complete, especially with the updates.
Yeah, we're kind of in a new world with, you know, post-pandemic. So there's a lot of things that we kind of had to, I think, catch up and just give people a guidebook.
So one of the things that we talked about in our last meeting that I brought up was around the liaison between the various boards and committees and commissions in town. And there is that section that indicates that members of this board would liaison with all, basically, we'd split up all of the boards, committees, and commissions. So I, one of the takeaways was, you know, for me to go and explore, you know, if that was the right approach and what our department heads thought in terms of, did they want, did the department heads want to liaison with the boards, committees, and commissions and report back to us? So I did some work on that, and I got, you know, some mixed results. But, you know, first of all, I confirmed that most of virtually all of the boards and committees are covered by a department head. So Barry, our building commissioner, you know, covers survey board, zoning board of appeals. His preference was for the Board of Selectmen to liaison directly with zoning board of appeals or the survey board or the commission on disability. Other department heads would prefer to, so Mark, for example, human services, would prefer to act as the liaison to us. So it was a little bit of sort of a mixed, a mixed bag there. And so the wording is very clear in the handbook in terms of the board will be the liaison to the committee or the board, the other boards in town. So I just wanted to make that, you know, put that out there. Is that, is the language the way we intend it? And is that, or are we going to change it to reflect the department heads actually acting as liaisons for us with the boards, committees, and commissions?
That would be my gut preference, would be the department heads to do that, and then to wrap it into their, you know, we're going to have every department head come in and do a meeting. So I think would make that part of their update is kind of what I see as the most efficient use of everyone's time, this board, you know, the planning, I'm sorry, the department heads. So my initial gut after talking to you and, you know, the research you did, thank you for that, and just our time and focus, you know, different boards are different. Some probably don't need a liaison, some probably do. I, my gut would be to probably make that one edit there, that it would be the department head that would liaise rather than this board. But you did the research, and curious if you agree with that, or?
Yeah, so there was a couple of people. So I think, you know what? So Deb, for example, Recreation Committee, originally she thought we would liaise directly with the Board of Recreation. She changed her way of thinking and thought that she would work through us. So I feel that that's appropriate as long as we're understanding the work that's happening and we're getting a good sense of the work that they're doing and any policy that they may be creating. I mean, some of it is more aligned with, you know, dictated by state statute and that type of thing, but those things that are more aligned with the policy that we may be creating, as long as we're informed and everything is, you know, moving strategically in the right direction, then that seems appropriate.
Yeah, and I don't think it prohibits us from, like, I think of Mark, you were really involved with an apponset reservoir, you know, board. You were going to all their meetings and you were doing that because of what was going on, or, you know, I'm really active in the EDC because I'm an ex officio. So I think that there will be some, and it wouldn't prohibit anyone who felt passionately about a board, you know, from kind of grabbing that when I'm taking it, but the cadence formally would be through the department head.
As long as we think that that provides adequate coverage, and that feels right, okay to me, to me.
Just to go to the point, are we interfering potentially with the role of the town manager? If indeed a department head wants to come in and kind of surprises us with something because you got a no vote from the town manager on a particular issue, that's the only thing I would worry about.
So just a, a long, thank you for that, Ed. My concern is not so much that part of it, because I think, you know, the department heads, we have the relations we have, is a pretty solid relationship with all of them. So I don't anticipate that to be an issue at all. But I do think that it's good to have, it's helpful to the administration to know that the board is comfortable with the information that's coming back to them, either through a liaison from the committee itself or from the department head. So if the department head comes back and provides you information and you want additional information, you always have the opportunity to go get, ask for more, or you could have the chairman of that committee report come back to report to the committee as well, to the board as well.
And I don't think we have an issue with, I feel like we feel, I feel informed with the boards and committees that, because it will kind of, you know, ebb and flow depending on what's going on in town. So I think that we kind of don't have an issue right now, and I think the department heads that we've tagged have now kind of made it even better. So I think we're more answering the mail to something that's in the, in the committee handbook. So I think we kind of edit that.
Yeah, the goal is to provide free flow of information, and I think that's what we're aiming for. Barry's a relatively new department head, so therefore he's probably a little bit uncomfortable with, you know, serving in that role because he's still learning the ropes himself. So, but I do think, think that, you know, my preference would be to have him to serve as the liaison and then provide information. If, again, if the chairman of the ZBA, for instance, wants to come in front of the board to provide additional insight and perspective for the Board of Selectmen, he certainly can do that.
And I think our communication plan will really help with this too, so Christine will work on that. So right now, I subscribe to the Board of Health, and I get all their agendas, and I get all their minutes, and I don't have to go watch the meeting because it's served right up to my email box. So, you know, the thought is, is this will be consistently used across all boards and committees, so, you know, we'll have better minutes out there. Will people be able to subscribe to what they want, you know, to be fed to them in their inbox? And then hopefully, you know, we can keep televising or, you know, recording for YouTube or cable access certain meetings that make things more accessible as well from a staying on top of issues perspective.
This past week at our operations meeting, you know, we did let the department heads who were there know that, well, one, that's been appreciated, the input that they've given when they come in and do their monthly input to the board, or annual input, rather, but also that there is a desire to get both the perspective from the operational department level as well as that board committee or commission that they work with when they come in to do their annual report. And everybody was fine with that. And tomorrow, we have our monthly department head meeting, and we'll have all department heads there, and we'll reinforce that same thing. And I expect we'll have the same sort of, you know, agreement that, you know, they enjoy coming in and making sure that, you know, they're lockstep with what the administration and the chief policy board are striving for.
And I think that's just a better flow anyway. You know, we could go to any committee meeting we want. Certainly, if there's three or more of us, we have to let Christina know. But, you know, so I think coming full circle, there might be a little edit that might be needed. You are correct, Seth, that maybe we don't necessarily have to go to the ones where there are department heads already going and giving monthly or maybe even daily input to our town manager. town manager.
So my thought is instead of it being liaison with Board of Selectmen, it would be a liaison with the department head and the department head would be responsible for, for updating us or, you know. So I think that we kind of cut that so we don't need to vote to assign, it's very formal right now. We don't need to vote to assign a selectman to every single board. I think it, it might just, you know, kind of, kind of be overkill and, you know, for all of us to be following five, six boards, you know, can be a little tough depending on what's going on.
And we don't want to make it hot on the board either.
Right, right.
That's not our goal.
So, so my recommendation would be that we, that we accept this with the edit to this final paragraph and it would be liaison or communication with the Board of Selectmen maybe is the header. And, you know, within the paragraph, we could talk about how a department head is assigned to each, you know, to be not only provide communication back and forth, but to be assistants, you know, if they have questions about agendas or, you know, whatever it may be, getting their meetings posted, you know, maybe we can wrap everything that we've been talking about into that paragraph. Does that sound like a plan?
Yeah, good question.
Sounds good. Okay, great. Thank you for your, for the work on that as well. All right, so I think we can get a motion to accept the handbook with, with the one pending revision to, to that paragraph that we discussed.
Motion to approve the revised board and committees handbook with the refinement on the section regarding liaison and communication between boards and committees and the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Any further discussion? Just one question I have, when do you anticipate to start those department head updates again?
September.
September, okay. All right, great. Looking forward to it. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, great. So that takes us to the assistant town managers update.
Okay, so first I wanted to update you on something we've been talking about for a little bit and that's the, the chair training. And so I want to give you a, you know, who, what, when, where, sort of a outline first. So what, we're talking about chair training for boards, committees, and commission chairs.
And possibly vice chairs too, I think, maybe, possibly, I don't know.
Absolutely. And that's when we get back into the house. So thank you for jumping into it, but that's, no, that, we've actually had that discussion. And so when is September? Why is really to enhance decision-making and communication and representation of resident and resident businesses throughout our boards, committees, and commissions. Who, and that would be board chairs and board committee and commission chairs, vice chairs, and those aspiring to move up through, you know, and, and we're actually not going to limit it. So we talked at our last meeting about doing a live presentation, recording it, and then we'd make that, you know, if somebody's brand new on a board committee or commission, you know, they could certainly, you know, watch it, they could come to it. I don't see any, you know, we don't have a limit here. I don't think we're going to overfill the room. If we do, we'll do two live trainings and then, you know, record. So no, you know, nobody is excluded. This is more of an inclusive sort of a training. And how is something that I've thought about quite, quite a bit. I thought about, you know, bringing in either our HR attorney or, or, you know, someone like that. And the more I thought about it, we have the talent in-house. So what I'd like to propose is that we do a, a team training and have one board chair or former chair teamed with one staff liaison or former staff liaison to team present some content that I'm putting together. And I think that would give both the, you know, perspective from that, you know, department head or liaison or from a professional side as well as someone who's sat as a chair or is sitting as a chair and give, you know, what it looks like from the community member, the volunteer, and bring that together and present it. I think that gives you a more enriching sort of presentation.
And possibly the, the, someone from the town clerk's office because they do a lot, you know, with getting agendas and filing and, you know, getting sworn in and open meeting law and disclosures. So, you know, that, that could be helpful as well.
Sure, sure. So, and I would anticipate doing it right here. So topics, you know, here are some general topics with many subtopics underneath that I'm proposing, starting off with roles. What are the roles, you know, what, what is the role of a, of a, of a chair, vice chair clerk? What is the role of the, being a member on a board committee or commission? Also, what are the roles of the, of the professional liaisons? What's the, what's the role if you have a, a staff clerk who's, who's assigned, who is available for your board committee or commission? Next, you know, I think it's important to talk about what is the reason to have a meeting? And, you know, I think in a nutshell, a meet, why do you come to a meeting? It's not really just to receive information, it's not really a social event, it's to make decisions. And so I think that's at the core of it. And then so we, I think we want to talk about why have a meeting? And if, if folks know that they're coming to a meeting to ultimately get to a decision, then, then they realize, okay, they should, you know, just stick to topic that's, 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 you know, vital to, to getting to there and soliciting information that wraps around making decisions and getting to that end. How do you make a good decision? Well, I think you, you look for varied input, so diverse opinions, and that's where the, you know, the, the, the role of the chair is really important in soliciting all the members. And so the chair really, and, and, you know, this is just a, you know, topic area, but really soliciting input and being that, that neutral party. And then, and then getting into meeting management and all the, all the things that go into managing a meeting from, from the preparation through the actual in the meeting to wrapping, wrapping up, and then also the, you know, the record keeping and, and minutes. And then another section on conduct, etiquette, and expectations of, of coming to a meeting, of participating in a meeting from, from the perspective of, you know, the, those appointed or those elected positions within a committee or board or commission, but also the, the staff, but also people coming to participate, whether it's remotely or citizens just coming to sit in the, in the meeting. And then last couple, you know, we'll get into the, the guide, you know, on, you know, what are the things that are covered in here that are germane as far as posting meetings, agendas, you know, making amendments, all those sort of things, you know, the code of conduct, the ethics training, the open meeting law, some of the mechanics of it. And then, and then talk about consensus building. And, you know, ultimately, we know we come to votes, but ultimately the job of a, of a chair is to build consensus among the board and, and when there isn't consensus, then you take it to a vote and majority rules. And then relationships and an entire module talking about relationships and how to build relationships and how those relationships, positive relationships can actually go, you know, loop back to where we are in the beginning, getting to decisions. And having relationships and good communications will lead to better decisions and better communications and better representation of the residents and resident businesses in the community. So in a nutshell, that's what I've got open to other topics that, you know, that, that folks think need to be incorporated in that, but that's what I've come up with to this point.
Yeah, if anything, I think we should try to keep it to an hour, maybe 75 minutes with questions, just, you know, just to make sure that we, we get people and, and they're able to accommodate in their schedules too, so.
Yeah, get the key points.
Okay, great. Look forward to hearing. What, so do we have a date for that or just September?
September. I don't have a, a date yet. I'm thinking mid-September, but I want to look at, I'd like to use this room and, you know, where this is, you know, something that's not regularly scheduled, you got to look for, you know, I'll update at the next meeting on, on when I think that should be.
All right, anything else before we move on to town managers update?
Just a couple of things. We, we have hired a couple of new people. So the couple position that we still hadn't hired for at our last meeting, so the, the administrative assistant in the finance department who will be serving primarily the assessors division, but also providing support to other, you know, other parts of the finance department. We have hired that person and, and Sarah will be starting on August 9th. Actually, we have a couple of people starting on that date. And I think we're getting close on a, on a chief assessor, but we'll have more to report on that at your next meeting. And that's all I have for this evening, unless there are questions.
No. All right, Bill.
Okay, good evening, everyone. And I, I just have a couple items for you tonight that, first is the fact that I just want to mention the passing of Tom Kelly, who was a former member of the Housing Authority who passed unfortunately this past week. I was able to attend his wake earlier tonight and was really well attended and sorry to see that happen and sorry, our condolences go out to the Kelly family. And I was able to pass along our appreciation for his service to the Housing Authority for so many years and again, sorry to see that happen. The other thing that I really wanted to make sure that we touched upon tonight was, was two things, actually, that I wanted to touch upon tonight was the fact that the board had, had asked that I look into the issue of trash and recycling options for the town. And I, during the past week before I left for vacation, I did reach out to Kathy Merzer from Mass DEP, who is the, sort of the, the, the lead person in this area in the state right now. I've known Kathy for a number of years and she's actually quite good at, of laying out all the different options that are available to cities and towns in Massachusetts right now under the current guidelines and what, and I explained the situation to her and she's very familiar with our situation with the way we are currently structured. And she said that she can offer some time to me and I'll come back with some more specific options for you to, to start thinking about the next time we have this conversation.
Great.
The second thing is, is the ARPA update and I, it was, as much as I tried to avoid contact with folks, I, I still managed to get a few phone calls while I was away during, during my vacation, but which, which was fine, but I, I think it was good to hear that, that the, the county commissioners have reached, agreed upon a direction for the ARPA funding and that they are going to take on the, that role and are actually working on the details of how they're going to roll that plan out now. They are working with Plymouth County and Bristol County to, to try and develop a, a what is really will be, as I understand it, and I've had it confirmed twice for me now, that it's more or less a oversight and review process for projects that will be consistent with the federal guidelines so that when any, any money that's actually spent through that program will be done consistently with, with what the guidelines are from the federal government. So we will have to apply for the money, but then what will happen is if there's any specific projects that we have, we'll just have to review them with them to make sure that they can, they are consistent with the spending guidelines for the funding. So it's good news in some respects in that there was, that it is a, something that we will not have to be responsible for the auditing piece of it. That's going to be something that the county will take care of on our behalf, but I think it's our responsibility to make sure that we give them projects that we can actually get funded properly. Doc?
Through Leah?
Of course.
But I thought, correct me if I'm wrong, that that was against what all town managers wanted.
Well, well, actually, not necessarily. The, the town manager, we just didn't want to make sure, we wanted to make sure that we, that they did not take the money and then spend it on their projects and then we wouldn't get our, our, our share of it. The way, the way it's been explained to me is that we will get our full share of the amount of money that we're supposed to get. And then what will happen, the only thing that we'll have to do now is we'll have to review the project with them to make sure it's consistent with the federal guidelines. So we will get the full allocation that we've been, we've been asking for.
Okay, that won't, won't change.
Yeah, that won't change. That won't change. And so the way this is going to work, and I, and I sort of picked up on this this afternoon is that, that they, by them taking the money, it's about $137 million, that they will invest the money and then what will happen is that the interest that will be earned from that will pay for the administration of the, of the grant itself. So we actually won't, we won't, we won't realize a loss in our funding because of that.
But that was going to be my next question. How mu, how many people are they going to have to hire to administer 24 communities?
Or 20, 28, 28 communities. So they're going to have to hire, hire a third-party administrator to do this because they're not staffed to do this and they, and they know that and they recognize that. But this is the way the plan is being rolled out. We should know by later part of August and then sometime early in September how the process will begin to begin, evolve for us and how we can actually start utilizing those funds. All right, so it's, it's, it's different from what I anticipated, we, we all anticipated was going to happen, but then the town, I haven't, I'm having a meeting with the town, the regional town managers group tomorrow afternoon and we'll talk about this more in further detail, but as it currently stands right now, I, I don't know that it's a bad thing. I think there was a concern initially that there was going to, there was going to be sort of less a use, that the county was going to use those money, that we're going to compete against the other, each city and town against, against each other, against what funding was going to go to which town. But the, the allocation is going to go to what says, it was originally proposed is the way I understand it now.
Just one more question if I could. So, so is this similar to their, their getting input also from, you said Plymouth and Bristol Counties, which also got lump monies and?
Exactly. And so they're, they're going to, they're going to be administering, what I understand, very similar type of programs. And Plymouth was able to do that very successfully with the, with the CARES money originally. They're one of the few counties that actually did that during this past, past year during COVID, so. So they, they're actually following that type of guideline on this too, so.
Well, we look forward to hearing more about both topics, then I think that's not, not the end on either.
No, and then finally, just reminder that July 24th, Saturday, July 24th, the Patriots Place Annual Patriotic Fireworks Display that was supposed to be held on July 2nd will be held on July 24th and that will begin at, at 9:15 PM. So, and then it also marks the first week of training camp for the, for the NFL season for the Patriots and what hopes to be a very fruitful and, and winning season for, for season 20, 2021.
And I think there's an in-stadium practice coming up. If I'm not mistaken, it's the fifth maybe, so the information hasn't come out on, on that yet, but I think it will be coming for Foxborough residents.
And we will, we will notify folks as soon as we can.
If you email foxboroughresidents@gilettestadium.com, you'll get on their email list and they'll send you that information when it comes out and they're also in contact with me so I can get that.
I'm sure it'll be plastered everywhere once it's out.
Soon as it's out.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, so selectmen's update. I, I have a couple of things, then I'll see if you guys have anything. So as we mentioned earlier, August, we were slated to have three meetings in the month of August, but we felt like we could skip the August 3rd meeting and that's why we, we put the Sharon Triathlon on here at the, at the kind of last minute. So that would take us to our next meeting on August 17th and then August 31st with the scheduled executive session, the planned for some union negotiation stuff for, for later in August, just as a coming, coming meetings ahead. And then the other thing, I, I saw Bill earlier today and I said, Bill, nice haircut. And I just wanted to mention that GA Barbers actually opened today right on Central Street uptown. So I think having a barber back will, you know, increase foot traffic and George, who has a shop up on, up in Hercules Plaza right now, has been a great supporter of the community. So I think that that is, is very exciting to see GA Barbers open a second location in town.
I will tell you that I am thrilled because I can actually walk out of the building and go over and get my haircut. As opposed to trying, trying to find someplace now since Dave is gone, of course, but, but and if, I have to compliment them, the, the inside of the building is beautiful. They did a tremendous renovation to that building. So whoever did it, kudos to them and to, and for them for financing that because that is a huge improvement to the downtown. So thank you for them, for them doing that.
So that's all I had for selectmen's update. Did anyone else have anything?
No.
No, Bill already stole my thunder.
I figured that.
Yeah.
All right, so with that, we have a couple of action items to run through. And Jeff, it's good to see you back here in person.
First one of the lot.
Yeah, yeah, I know. All right.
All right, so motion to approve the June 22nd, 2021 Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And, and we did talk a little bit about maybe shortening the minutes a little bit and I think that we, we might, you know, condense some of the, you know, little discussion points along the way since meetings are recorded. Obviously we'll still have robust minutes, but, you know, maybe free up Christina's time a little bit more to just shorten them a little, a little bit.
On that note, has, is there been a push? I know at one time, year ago, we talked about legislatively getting video as, as approval for minutes. Any, any work on that?
It doesn't, it won't get any legs.
Yeah, and I think like, there's been a couple of meetings that I've watched that like, you know, there might've been a sound issue or, you know, no one anticipates it and cable access has so many meetings to run that I just don't, I don't think that we're, that we're there yet.
Yeah, but even on the state level, they just, it's, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
At a level just hasn't come up with, hasn't gained any, any traction at this point in time yet, so.
Okay.
Hopefully, at some point we'll come up with a, with a good remedy for that.
All right. So we, all in favor, we take the vote and now I can't remember what we were talking, oh, all right.
Yes, we did.
We did? Okay, all right, great. So next one.
Motion to accept a $70 donation from Stop &amp; Shop Blumen for Good Program and a $750 for a donation from Ahern Middle School Parent Advisory Council to the Council on Aging and Human Services for Programming.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept a $750 donation with $375 going to fire and $375 going to police from the Ahern Middle School Parent Advisory Council.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Motion to approve the extended food and alcohol service hours request from Scorpion Bar to begin at 10:00 AM on September 26th, October 24th, November 14th, and 28th, and December 26th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. And then the last one, just before you make the motion, I don't think that we've seen something for 9:00 AM for alcohol start, at, at least in my experience. So, and, and Chief O'Leary, I don't think you've ever seen us go that early. So, you know, my gut recommendation is that we make a motion for this to be 10:00 AM and from what I understand, Katie, you talked to CBS Sporting Club and they were okay with that? And I don't think we have anyone here from, from CBS Sporting Club about this, right? No one's?
No, I didn't receive any emails just asking if you wanted to have someone here. So he isn't available, but he's 100% fine with just the 10:00 AM. I just did some research on what was allowed. And that's up to the local licensing authority to go as early as 8:00 AM and as late as 2:00 AM. So it's totally up to you guys and he is happy with whatever you guys are good with.
Yeah, I think, yeah, yeah. I think with parking lots and details and just keeping all the restaurants consistent with that opening time, my recommendation, you know, if the board agrees or disagrees, you know, certainly further conversation would be to amend this motion to be 10:00 AM.
Totally agree.
Okay, all right, great.
Motion to approve the extended food and alcohol service hours request for CBS Seen Doing Businesses as CBS Sporting Club to begin at 10:00 AM on September 26th, October 24th, November 14th and 28th and December 26th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Not on.
Okay.
I mean, just for clarification, those are all one o'clock starts for games. So it gets everybody's wondering.
All right. I think we're ready for the final.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.